Okay, good morning, folks. Thanks for coming early on a Friday, especially after a late, long meeting yesterday for some of you. We'll go ahead and get started. Sorry for the delays, just a few technical things to work through. Just a reminder, we are being recorded, doing a backup recording just in case. Start that here. How many ways can you record people? Okay, all right.
Do you want to talk, like, is that all right to?
Yeah.
Okay, so I think maybe the one to start with was, Jen, did you want to talk about the language, the sort of conversation we had on the not including specific buffer language?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I found all the Candela data and, you know, where that stands. And to be honest with you, I think it just makes sense to be as simple and say every light, and again, the language, every light forward has to be dark sky compliant because, to be honest with you, I think if we come in with where the Candellas are now, there is a chance that our technology gets better in the next five years and the Candela changes. And we know dark sky is going to be compliant, period. So I just think it simplifies it and we get away from, from kind of all that, the Candela language, so.
Does that make sense to folks? Any questions?
Oh, so we didn't have something in there yet. We were going to be talking to the lighting consultant and folks, but I think the part that would handle it is under 3.1. The, at the time of site plan review, any newly proposed lighting must be dark sky compliant. I mean, the most current dark sky and energy efficiency measures as specified by the International Dark Sky Association, so that whether that's dark sky of 2024 or dark sky of 2030, you're getting the best lighting technology at the time.
I have a quick question. It sounds like this is a program that's not going anywhere, but does it make sense to put something in there that says, "or the most recent"? That way it covers, like, say for some reason, this program disappears. I don't think it is, but then it's the most recent, right?
It's a good point. Kim and I did do a little bit of research on that because we had the same, anytime you're tying it to, like, a state agency's current best management practices, anything like that, it's risky. With dark sky, they are a nonprofit organization that's been around for 42 years, I think, is what we found when we looked. So it seems fairly, you know, safe. Obviously, nothing is, you know, absolute, but...
And it would still be compliant even if that was no longer around, right? Whatever their last standard was, in theory?
In theory, you know, I mean, if they go away, I don't know if they're referencing...
If it's dark sky compliant, it's always dark sky compliant, even if it's not around, I would guess. But I hear your point.
Yeah, just as long as the wording doesn't make it so it's questionable.
Problematic, exactly. Yeah, that's fair. So you and Kim talked about that enough, you think?
We did, and I don't know if there's...
I don't know, if you guys are comfortable with it, I don't think we have to...
I mean, I think, so if we said, like, "or equivalent standard" or something at the end, but the only thing I think we could get into would be the debate of, you know, is it really equivalent, right? You know, I mean, zoning ordinances are dynamic, so I think it might be something that, you know, we have to just keep on top of, and if it, if the dark sky association goes away, then we've got to deal with that.
Well, and it does say, "meeting the most current dark sky." So if they go away, the most current is the one that...
Whatever the last one was, right?
Right, so that probably covers it.
This might be a stupid recommendation, but what if we referred to dark sky not as a company, but as a, yeah, so that if dark sky company isn't available, so maybe it's lowercase letters instead of uppercase letters referencing the name of a business? I don't know if that's possible.
I think that's problematic because you can then get into a debate as to, there could be 10 of them out there, you know?
Fair, fair point, Karen.
I don't have a solution, but it's a good idea, but...
I, my guess is that, Adam, because Adam and Kim spoke about it, I'm not too concerned that if, like you said, Adam, if it needed to change at some point, we could go back and, you know, if it, if it went under, which seems unlikely, then we could go back and do that. But I would also argue that the, the standing standard would be whatever the last one was, even if it was no longer an entity for some reason.
Which would presumably buy us the time to figure out what is the new standard.
Correct. And, and you're not going to grant, I mean, they would be grandfathered in anyway, so that it would just be like, this is still compliant with the prior standard even before the organization went away. So I, I think it's a low likelihood.
Just as a curiosity, how long does the lighting system last? I mean, is this like a once every 20 years we're going to have a site plan review for the light system, or? Not trying to tire you of anything.
No, 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 with this technology, the warranty lasts for 20 years, and beyond that, it should last even further. I mean, the LED technology is, is way beyond the old school halogen lights, so it's, yeah, yeah. And the warranty includes them coming in to do the site, you know, the, the light checks every, I believe it's either twice a year or once a year, just to, to make sure, you know, so. Yep, you pay for the warranty, too.
Okay, so just looking around, are folks comfortable with that, where we landed there? Okay.
So I think that was the only outstanding change that we had not addressed, but I know John has a couple of things. Do you want to, yeah, do you want to run through those?
You all have a copy of the email that I sent, and I'm sorry I did it last night, but that's when I had a chance to look at things. On B33, this is the thing, I think, if I remember right, Colby Sawyer was going to get back to you with some proposals.
That's right.
And, and that's not in there yet. And I think we talked about, you were going to propose a certain number of events per year, and I also made the comment, thinking about year. I don't personally care, but do you, whether the college wants it to be academic year, whether it wants it to be calendar year, as far as when you start it and stop it, it might be easier for you on an academic, but whatever. And then D2, I was, I don't think it's absolutely required, but I think it's more clear if you add an "and" before the "or," so that it doesn't look like, I think that it's less restrictive that way. Number three, that was just me being a numbering guy.
We need you to do the whole zoning ordinance.
Yeah, that was just suggesting the numbering when you get it finished.
John, on your D2 question, I, I had spoken to Adam quickly about this. There is an entire enforcement section in the regulation, and, you know, I have some problem with this language, what it means, and, you know, garbling around all of the things, and I think that we could actually eliminate this and just go with the enforcement section that's in the, in the entire regulation.
I didn't look at that. Do you know what it says?
It's right at the end.
Oh, it's on this?
No, it's in the end of the zoning ordinance. It's page 120, and bear with me, I can pull it up for us.
That's just a proposal to get rid of the ambiguity.
So this walks through the process of enforcement with the selectmen being the enforcers or their designee, which is typically myself, the town administrator, throughout the zoning ordinance, and what the different permits and duties are. And I can't see where this would be handled differently than any other site plan. I mean, I think it would be the same process. I do think there, the one thing I was sort of uncomfortable was the, "Colby Sawyer shall be responsible." I mean, hopefully you're not going anywhere, but putting the, the sort of name of the institution and who is responsible there, I think.
So, Adam, what was your sense there, based on what Paul mentioned?
I think if this section went away, we're covered with what is in the ordinance. I don't think that, I don't think there's necessarily danger in having something additional, but I think it essentially says the, the same.
Are you saying eliminate D?
Yeah.
Entirely?
Yep.
Well, eliminate two, maybe.
I thought you were saying eliminate both one and two, but you're saying just two?
Well, I think the applicant under one, there's an additional obligation to provide evidence.
Right.
Question?
I'm looking at enforcement.
Yeah, Adam, could you show us where, under the zoning for enforcement, which is the applicable paragraph that you say makes this redundant?
I'm sorry?
Could you show, just point out, under enforcement, which part of that makes the current language redundant?
So the, yeah, "upon any well-founded information of this ordinance being violated, the Board of Selectmen shall take information to enforce the provisions of the ordinance by seeking injunctive relief as provided by RSA, fines and penalties as provided by RSA 67617, cease and desist orders provided by 6177A, local land use citations as provided by 67617B, including any amended statutory provisions." And then those provisions in the RSA do talk about revoking site plan and, and procedures on plots.
What about the language that says that upon violation, you could withdraw just the special, what's, what do they call it, special events? Does that give you the authority, do you think, within?
That may be something unique.
What I, what I'm seeing there, and again, I had not seen that before, when you start talking about injunctive relief and cease and desist orders and all of that stuff, that gets expensive and creates a threshold that the town might not take action. Whereas if it's a lower imposition, the town and Colby Sawyer could work together without having to go to court. That's just my impression from seeing that quickly.
Do you have thoughts on that, Paul?
I don't have a problem with that. I think Adam was mentioning that inclusion, inclusion of something like number two raises a question of whether the town is waiving its general enforcement authorization, that's all. I mean, if, if, if it's beneficial and we clear that up, then I guess we could say, you know, for example, you know, I, I don't know how, I wasn't familiar with why the focus was on non-athletic events. Obviously, you know, that could be something that's worked out or something like that. But it just seemed that the wording could be interpreted to limit rights that the town already has, and I don't know if that's the intent or not.
Could it, would it be possible to, as you say, carve, say that this is not a carve-out, but just sort of just state that and then say, "in addition," or as an example, like you said, right?
I mean, we could start the line by saying, I'm trying to think of how we'd...
You could say something like, "in addition to those rights or authorities under Article 29A, comma, da-da-da-da-da," and then go on.
I have a question that, okay, so, right, this section has all these parts. There's the, the special events, there's the sound, there's, you know, all these different things that they have to comply to. How does that work when, like, in this point, right, we're talking about one of the things potentially could be changed from what's written here, right? If we say, "you can't have special events anymore," but it's written in here, how does that work? Like, say, for example, I feel like this would be the equivalent, what if their sound system isn't working? We wouldn't, or could, could theoretically, then the sound system doesn't get, isn't allowed anymore, you know what I'm saying? Like, how does, I just don't know legally and, like, in the sense of this document, if we're saying you can have XYZ, but now we're saying, "well, Y might be taken away." You know what I'm saying? Like, it's one of, I just don't know from, I'm not familiar enough with how these are written to know just how that works.
You mean as an enforcement mechanism, you're saying?
Yeah, because...
You took one of the parts away.
Right, it's like one thing, and I understand why, because to your point, like, if there's suddenly double the events, that's a problem. But just like, if it's written in here, and now we're like, "well, now you can't do that," I just, I just am not understanding how that works in the big picture. Could, in theory, that same thing be said for, like, right, their sound system? Their sound system, they're constantly over, like, can the town say, "well, you're not complying to this one part, we have it written that you can, this is how you comply to it, but now we're going to take, take it away because they're not meeting the," I just...
I mean, anybody that's breaking a site plan, which would include all of these components, runs the risk of being told they're in violation, and that could be...
Right, but that's the whole site plan, right?
Right. But any piece of that not being complied with makes the whole site plan in violation, more or less.
Which still goes back to the whole, the thing as a whole, right? Does, like, does this have to get, if that gets taken out and it's still in here, I just don't know how, there, suddenly the town's like, "no, you're not allowed to do these, we've taken it away, you were abusing it," but it's still written in here and they're not in compliance with the site plan, right? Because, because of that one piece. I'm just trying to figure out the whole picture of it. Like, I, I understand why we're specifically talking about this, but...
They would have to bring it into compliance.
Okay, and then they would get to do the events again.
Right. I mean, and I think that perhaps it's the denial of further athletic events until the violation is rectified, to, to sort of say that it's not all future non-athletic events forever, just because you broke it one time.
Right, and that's where I think my confusion, okay.
To cut through this, it's, it's, to me, it seems like what we're saying is, it would be good if it could be worked out. And, but I don't think it's right for the town to create a different category of ultimate enforcement of site plans. So I was going to suggest something that says, "in the event of violation, the planning board, in addition to its rights under that article, may take such actions to limit the rights here under, up to and including voiding the site plan." Probably not the right words, but the implication that we're going to work it out, you know, if the lights are staying on too late, you know, they come back and say, you know, "you can't go beyond nine o'clock," and let, till you show that, you know, you're compliant, or, I, I don't know what that interim solution might be, but if the intent is to say we can make an interim solution without voiding the site plan, I don't see any problem with that. That, and maybe Erin's saying the same thing that I was saying. It just seemed to me that it was strange that any violation, we're going to deal only with non-athletic events.
So, and is the idea, so, say a hypothetical, is that the PA system is malfunctioning, and there's some issue with the sound, and they're not able to comply, understanding that, you know, having to cancel collegiate games, you know, for the week where you're trying to get it fixed is probably a huge issue, but in that time period where you may get to carry forward with your three games, no non-athletic events would be held that are sort of outside of the, the sort of primary use of it? Is that the, the overall goal? I mean, I guess I'm asking just to sort of, that might help us frame what the intent of this is. I mean, is it to give you some sort of temporary usage still while we're working out a violation, or?
I, I think what I was pointing out was just, it's, it seems odd, from my layman's knowledge of this, right, that if we have, if we set in anything, here are four or five rules, and they're all sort of, you know, they're, in theory, equal, right? They're, here's what you have to abide by. Any one, putting it sort of in a separate category, just seems, I mean, it seems odd, and I, I understand the intent of it, but I'm just not sure how it's enforceable in a different way than any other rule. And, I mean, it makes sense, what you were saying, obviously, Adam, that, like, the way you, you worded it, that yes, they would have to get back in compliance, is not the way I think it was reading before and kind of the way we were reading it now. It almost was like, "nope, you've abused this and you can't have it," and I understand that, and I love that idea that, like, if you start, if it's a continual problem, of course, this needs to change. But if it's written in this, it's like, "well, these are the set rules, how do you just take one out unless we come back to this and edit?" Right? I, I assume that's how that works. So that's where I think giving this special rules just seems, just strictly from a document, this is a document, this is what you have to adhere to, was just not meshing.
Would you put an enforcement clause in every other zoning ordinance? Because my thing always is, I don't think any body, any ba-dee, should be treated differently than the others. So if all the other regulations don't have a separate enforcement clause, why would this one?
I don't know the answer to that, but I saw it written here, and I said, "what, what are we trying to accomplish? Is this a, a limitation on the boards?"
And we have had a discussion a little bit about the institutional zones being called out because they are unique, right? But I hear your point, Karen, that, and I kind of wonder, generally, I'm in favor of less, because it just makes the, the ordinance less complex, but I, I do wonder if there's not a way to do as Paul suggested and, you know, make clear that we're not giving up any of our other rights as outlined in the enforcement section of the ordinance, but then also, you know, try to, try to show that there would, the intent here might be that it, that there should be some sort of effort around remediation and getting back into compliance. But I don't know what you think on that, and others think on that.
So one way to test it would be to ask yourselves, let's say, five years from now, they're doing something and it's bothering the neighbors because they're making noise too late, or they're having more events than they said they would, or whatever it is. Without this provision, what would happen? Adam, I assume they contact you?
The, I mean, the neighbors would contact me, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, how, how would it play out if this is not in there? And would it be any different than if it is in there? I think that's the way to test it.
How it would play out first is we, you know, investigate whether or not the, the complaint is founded, if there is an issue. And then if there is an issue, we would meet with them for how they're going to resolve that issue, what is the, the nature of it? Is it a new PA system that went in that's, you know, not set right? Did someone play with settings, that sort of stuff? And then nine times out of 10, it's an easy fix that happens, you know, pretty quickly. Other times, we have to take actual, you know, cease and desists and, and shut things down until it's rectified. And that, whether or not this was in here, that would be our process. I mean, with any property owner, we try to work with them on a more casual level before we, you know, send a certified letter, but sometimes it does get to that. And I think the difference here would be the sort of consequence of the non-athletic events probably would not be the first thing that we would go to by relying on the regular enforcement. It would simply be bring this into compliance, whatever isn't, or everything is shut down.
So it sounds like, so it sounds like the language, perhaps what Paul's suggested changes, does have some effect? Yeah, okay.
I can just tell you how I would hand the athletic side of this, obviously, from my standpoint. I'm planning on sticking around, obviously, at the institution, but we're a coach, a team to have a complaint. For music, obviously, I'm very accessible, right? Email, phone. I like to think I run a fairly tight ship in our department. Hopefully Karen agrees. I mean, I'm five minutes in, but I think I'm showing my value, what I value. That'd be an initial, that's a conversation, look, kind of like my kids, "it doesn't happen again, or we can't have nice things." And, and just really simple, and from, you know, other conversations I've had with my coaches, not in that realm, it's been, it's worked, right? It's taken a step back, it's okay. And then if it were to happen again, then literally we're shutting down the sound. That team cannot have, and unfortunately, if we can't follow rules, again, we can't have nice things. So that's kind of how operate in general. So that's how I would operate as a leader with, with teams. But I'll also caution that there are times when people outside of athletics use, use the field, like, we may, in the summertime, if kids go down there and bring their own, you know, high school kids bring their own speaker, I don't have the autonomy, like, in the Hogan Center, and I will tell them to shut it down or turn it off. Like, we got a lot of high school kids in there, because we're very community-friendly, on a holiday or whatnot, and they're in there in the basketball court, and they're blasting their own speakers. I would, if I walk through, even though they're not part of my department, I'll say, "hey, guys, can you turn that down?" But, not that it happens often, but I think it's something to be mindful of, because we do open up our, our trail and our fields to the community, so.
I have a question. I don't know if we're resolving, if we're tabling and going to be wordsmithing this section, but I have a question about it.
Go ahead. I think we're, we're still in that process, but yeah, go ahead.
Okay. In D1, Colby Sawyer College shall be responsible for adhering to all specific conditions and shall provide, provide evidence of compliance upon request from town officials. Do we need to enumerate, elucidate, clarify what that evidence is?
I mean, I think it could be anything, so I, you know, it's so dependent on what the matter of compliance is, that I'm not sure we would want to be too specific. I do, you know, in the context of this conversation, sort of wonder if that's necessary. I mean, any of the violations on any property under the enforcement section, they've got to, you know, work with us on giving us what we're asking for, or else we have to make a decision on the information we have, and if there's no information to help us with that, then that might not work out for the property owner.
Right, I do understand it, it's in here, though, and...
Right, right.
So what I'm hearing is that you're not really sure one's going to stick around, and therefore, this may be a moot point. However, if we do decide to have it included in there, I do think we need to somehow clarify that.
I think the issue would be if it was a sound violation, that it would be some sort of proof that there is, or if there's a supposed sound violation, some sort of proof that it's not, or if it's lighting, or if it's, that's, I think, part of the issue, right, Adam? That the, the means of evidence are going to vary depending on what the supposed violation would be. But you, you handle that now, I think is what you're saying, just with whatever requests that you make. So I hear your point, that it's not clear there, but I think it would also be situationally dependent, so that the, if, if the town is asking for X as proof of compliance, then that would be the thing.
Fine.
Yeah, but I, it's a broader point, too, of whether we need to keep that. So what's your, do you have a sense?
I think it's probably redundant. Go ahead.
Again, it's about sort of details. Under 3.3, lighting requirements, special events. It says, "short-term usage for non-athletic events may be granted for special events through the submission of a special event permit." And I recall the last meeting that we had, Adam, that oftentimes, and more often than not, the special permit triggers action on the part of the police or whatever. Does it make sense to say anything about to whom it should be submitted, how long in advance, and does it need to be approved prior to the event? And does it need to be approved prior to the event?
Yeah, I mean, I think we can say submission of a town special event permit. As far as approval, I mean, I think that should be inherent in a permit, that you need the permit before the event. As far as how far in advance, you know, we get the, the rummage sale at the Presbyterian Church six months in advance. We get, you know, the opening of Life is Good two days before the event. And, you know, I think we try to, you know, be as working with them, so I'm, I would be hesitant to put a deadline on it.
That's fine. I do think, however, we need to identify whether or not the permit needs to be approved prior to the event. Is this a notice, or is this a request for approval?
So we could say, "Events through submission of a town special event permit prior to event."
I think, too, this is the point that was made last time, is I completely understand what you're, you considering a special event, like, all of a sudden, you don't, you know, there's, it gives land concerts, we're bringing in, so I completely understand that. I think we just need to make sure we understand that, again, the outing club boasts community. Like, if it's 10 kids on the field, you know, those type of things are community. Like, a special event is, hey, if we had an opportunity to host an, an NHI double A, whatever, you know, something that, that, yes, we would know that four, five, six months in advance. Like, we host that in the Hogan Center. We know that's, like, those are the larger, what I consider, special events that, you know, on a bigger scale. But like, again, when the small community, you know, come in, that, that's, you know, that could be, hey, the outing club wants to do something three days before, you know, those type of things, so.
I mean, and the, the non-athletic events in there, when then we reference the definition, is not specific to Colby Sawyer athletic events. It does say, "Any event not classified as an athletic competition or practice." So I think that would be helpful to allow for outing club usage.
But I think the reason that was discussed the last time was because that only pertains to the lights. The outing club wants to come over in the afternoon and play baseball.
Right.
Or whatever, that, that's not an impact. This is when they start using the lights. And that does, I think, mean that you have to ask for permission to use the lights for other than a Colby Sawyer athletic event. Otherwise, it becomes endless. Could be anybody, and anybody in the town. Leagues that haven't been developed yet, you know, adult softball leagues, I don't know, whatever it is. But the idea was, they're asking for the lights for those 50 students that will help them for financial security and to keep their place attractive to others. And so my position on it is, yes, let's help you with the lights and attract those students. But just because you have the lights now, don't then start endlessly using them for other things that aren't for the purpose of attracting those students. So I, I like the language the way it is. And it was to keep it from expanding five, 10, 15 years from now, people who aren't in this room, and people who are leading the college who have different views about how to use those lights. I think it's important.
I have a question. Is, there is a section that describes the special use permit. So what is, what is there should be reference from this section, not that we need to repeat it, but if someone needs to do a special use permit, the parameters of that must be described somewhere.
Can I back off just a second? What, when we're talking about special events, are they other than non-athletic events?
Did you say that again, Paul?
The heading is "Special Events," which I don't think is defined in our regulation. I think it's called "Temporary Events." But I, I had trouble tracking it through, so I don't take that as gospel. I'm just saying, what are, what are we addressing here? It is use of the lights. And I think, like, graduation, you probably do a temporary event permit for graduation, or something like that.
One suggestion, if you changed, you have a definition of non-athletic events above, and so that's defined. And so if Section 3.3 was categorized as non-athletic events, then it would...
I think that helps, yeah. But the temporary permit, as, as Adam has described, is a length, not a lengthy process, but a, sort of a town-wide encompassing process. And I, I didn't, I thought when we talked about it the other time, we were not intending to bring that in for like, a junior soccer team that you agree to have their game there with the lights on. Help me, Adam.
And honestly, I'm trying to read a section, so I wasn't totally listening to your...
Is it the intent to use the town temporary permit process? Is, I guess, the best way that I can say this?
I think so, and that's what I was reading, was the temporary events section. I can pull it up here, hold on just a second.
Well, we're still on that. The non-athletic events, I just, people who know more about the definitions maybe should speak to this, but I, I don't think that current, and under the current definition, that's not excluding other, it's not specifying Colby Sawyer, or collegiate, or anything like that, so... Or even if it was any event not classified as a, an athletic event, but was capitalized, then it would, right? It's not excluding other things right now.
It, it sounds weird when you read it, but that's the way it should be.
There we go, okay. So, I mean, the temporary events is a very prescribed process. And talks about the permits. I think it mostly fits what we would be looking for. You know, it says, "Events such as grand openings, dedications, graduations, and other similar activities." And talks about them being allowed in all zone districts. I would say it does exclude parties and weddings. However, oftentimes, we do them because people's insurance companies want to see something, and so we, we do it for them as a, as a help, but... But I think this would fit in here, talks about the police, you know, the, the process. So perhaps we need to change that to temporary events, and then a temporary event permit, instead of special event permit. I don't think, reading this, that it, how it's written in Section E of the general provisions section, would. So I think if we want that, we maybe need to add, you know, specific language into this section. But I also think that by the definition of what we have for non-athletic, we would not necessarily default to that anyways. So again, if that's something we want, we might need to look at that part, too. So, I'm trying to think of how we do this, because if we say...
Adam, Adam, I think we, we need to answer the first question first, and that is, is the, is the idea that we're trying to get here, that any event with the lights on, that isn't an athletic event, needs to go through this process? Or are we trying to refer to something else? If, it's just a wording thing, one way or the other?
That's the idea, is that Colby Sawyer, for their athletic events, has the ability to use the lights as they see fit within the confines of this ordinance. Anything outside of that, whether it be a summer concert, or a, you know, private event, or, or the outing club, or the high school. If they use it during daylight hours, that's fine, that's not under this section. So I think to do that, I mean, I guess my question becomes then, so the definition of non-athletic events doesn't, would not trigger for high school or outing club. But then, because we have a separate definition for athletic event, do we then, to parse out non-athletic event, look to the definition of athletic event, which includes any Colby Sawyer athletic competition? So you'd be saying, any non-Colby Sawyer athletic competition? I mean, is that, I'm looking at some of the lawyers in the room to help me with this, but...
Well, I think, as Aaron pointed out, first you change the definition of non-athletic events to "any event not classified as an athletic event," capitals.
Or if you wanted it to be, if you're trying to separate out so that a high school soccer game doesn't go to this temporary events process, you could leave it how it is and kind of separate out the two categories, right? I'm, I'm just trying to, I know you were, I, right? That was kind of the intent, is like, high school soccer game, you don't need to go through this official temporary events process? So by keeping them separate, you could?
I think we want it to, though, so I think...
Okay, we want even that, too.
Right, so I think Paul's solution there, then, in the definition of non-athletic event...
Right, you just kept...
So, and, right, and adding "event," that that then clarifies that.
All right, but I, I just want to say this, maybe John doesn't want that, but what we're saying is to have to go get a permit for the outing club, which is an athletic event, really does not seem community friendly. And John, I hear you, that things change many years later, they do. That, that's the evolution of life. But it really seems not community friendly. If every time the outing club or the high school, we have to go get a permit for an athletic event on athletic fields where there are athletic lights. I mean, that is the intent of this property. We, we open the Hogan to the community. I mean, we have all sorts of places on Colby Sawyer that we open. Now, I agree, if we want a concert, if we want to host a car rally down there, if we want to have someone's 50th reunion down there, or we want to have, you know, a big, huge wedding, that's a totally different thing. But I think that offering our field space to the communities that we serve and not having to get a permit is a very reasonable request.
I do think there's some difference in the college having the internal mechanisms to run the, the events of your athletic events versus the outing club doesn't have security. And maybe they'd be going through you, and that would be something we'd have to know. So an after-hours event of, even if it's athletic for outside organizations, may require town involvement. That if it's the homecoming game for Kearsarge High School, and, and, you know, we may actually need to be involved in that. So I think there is value in some process existing there, regardless of neighbor impacts.
Yeah, and all events, to be clear, at Colby Sawyer, have to go through events. That's why we have an event person. And it's for that very reason. Do we need police patrol at the, at the street? Do we need what other town involvement? But to say every single time, we need a permit, just seems a lot.
Sort of hypothetical, you know, how you see this running when you do rent it out to these organizations, or whether you let them use it, rent it, whatever. But it's not gonna be a short-term thing, right? I mean, the outing club's not gonna call on Tuesday and ask if they can use your field on Thursday night for, or...
That's, that's the rea, yeah, and that's the only reason I'm, is that that could, that could happen. And it, we'd be in, within the parameters, you know, and it could be from seven to eight. But to be honest, if that were to happen, and I'm just gonna have to say, no, I'm sorry, we can't comply, because I, I can't, what am I gonna start this process a day before? And again, not that I think it'll happen a lot, but I think, obviously, we respect and have created these parameters. And if Kearsarge reaches out and says, hey, wanna do a homecoming soccer game? Say, game starts at six, right? Same, it's not gonna go past nine. You know, we're still, we're not going outside of any of the parameters that we've, we've come to, together to, you know, to put together, so.
And my point was simply that those kinds of events are typically scheduled, you know, they set college, or high school sports like six months in advance, don't they? So, I mean, it doesn't seem like that would be a huge lift to do a permit in those scenarios, that it's not going to be a last-minute situation.
And it's a privilege, and so if they want to do it, they get information, once this is allowed, that if you want to use our fields with the lights for any purpose, we need to receive your request no later than, you know, 48 hours, whatever it is. That's just an easy rule, that's not an inconvenience. The inconvenience is the lights. Asking to be able to use them seems like a reasonable process. And I'm concerned that we're already talking about uses in addition to the reason they first asked to put the lights up. And that's why I think there ought to be an enforcement on it, and a limitation on it, and a number of events.
Adam, does that make it easier, too, for you guys to track? Because that's gonna be part of the process, too, is, right, the, the tracking part. Sorry, I'll pull it closer, it is...
Right, I mean, assuming that the next part of this conversation is, what is the, the number of events? I mean, there's really no way to track that unless we are requiring some sort of a permit.
Suggestion, I'm not selling this, but if, in accordance with what we have here, we allowed the zoning administrator to, at his judgment, approve events that, without going through the police and stuff like that, because the submission says it's undertaken, to make that permit thing more, less cumbersome, is, would that... You'd get, we'd get the notice, you would determine on the face of the notice, we can do some kind of form, you know, for the junior soccer club, that there is no need really to go to all the other departments. Does, but, I mean, you still would have the right, you know, if you, if, if it didn't answer all those questions, you'd have the right, does, does, does that bridge this?
I mean, in a lot of ways, I feel like I'm the least important of those signatures in the, in the terms of special events, that, you know, it's, it's really the, the public safety side of things that I think is probably the most important. And probably from the college's perspective, too. I mean, if we break a zoning ordinance, you know, then no one's typically getting hurt. If there's a large event that we don't have the right crossing down there, that could be, you know, catastrophic. So I, I wouldn't want to take that on, you know, solely on my signature. If the goal is to make sure that the event is held, I mean, yes, part of it is constraining so that it's not every night of the week, which is sort of my side of things. But if the goal of a temporary event is for general public safety and well-being, I think it's important to include the others.
To be clear, what, this is not, but what I'm saying is, if on the face of it, they say, the event staff is in charge of this, it's under our insurance, it's, you know, our security people will take care of it. I'm not trying to redo the wheel, I'm just trying to make it more efficient for the junior soccer club. But I, I'm not wedded to that, I'm just trying to get past this.
Yep. Yeah, I mean, I guess I wouldn't be comfortable saying yes or no without talking to the police chief and, you know, getting her input.
But Karen, you mentioned it before, and I was gonna bring it up, and you, you raised the, the point a few minutes ago about, last time you said essentially, the outing club example of like, hey, they call you up, we would love to use your field. Obviously, they're not doing that now, and at this time of year, when it's dark, because there's no, no way to see down there, but... there's no, no way to see down there, but in the other times of year, when they do call, how much notice is it? I mean, is it something where they, the example that Adam gave on, you know, calling on a Tuesday to use it on a Thursday, do they call 30 minutes before they want to head down there? I'm just curious, like, how it works.
I honestly don't know, because they're not calling me.
Okay.
To be quite, quite honest, it would be probably the Hogan Center, or it would be our event coordinator that they would reach out to, so I, I don't know the answer to that question. You know, I do also want to just make it clear that the reason we do want the lights is for enrollment, but my statements are, we are a community partner, and a very significant one, and we're trying to offer that to people. It's not that we're trying to say, oh, now we want to have 100 million events here. What we're saying is, Colby Sawyer is very important to this community, as are our other community partners, so we want to make it seamless to them, if we can. As Jen said, if we've got some kind of tournament coming up that someone wants, of course we need to do a special thing. If, if Kearsarge High School, their lights go down, and they call us at four o'clock and say, our lights are broken, I'm sorry, we can't help you. We don't want to be that person. We want to be the one saying, hey, great, we don't have anything going on, sorry you're in that situation, come on up, and we'll make sure the event people are here and figure that out for you. But if we say that we're only going to let Colby Sawyer athletic events do this without permits, it's limiting, and we're not saying not to go through processes, we are, I'm happy to do that, but there's multiple reasons that we want these lights. Number one is enrollment, and number two is to continue to be a good partner with this community and surrounding towns.
Yeah, and I hear that, I guess, I, I imagine some people would argue that you, you could be a good partner in other ways, just maybe not that, but I, I hear your point.
Can I just ask a question? So Karen, there's a cost that goes with putting the lights on? Yeah, so does that mean that, like, the, you have, you're going to have to charge some people for use, the use of the lights?
Maybe. It depends on the situation. So we have Black Rock Camp that comes, right, now, they come in the summer, so the likelihood of them using the lights is probably slim, because it stays light till nine o'clock at night. But if we had someone come in and say, you know, like Jen was saying, let's say we have a tournament, we would get revenue for that tournament for using the lights. A, a lot of, you know, Division One, Two, and Three schools get revenue for that, for being the host of something. Now, would the outing club, if we, would we set up, oh, you gotta pay, you know, $300 every time you use it? We're not going to do that, and that's part of the community partnership. But we would potentially have groups that would come in that we could charge some revenue, too.
Can I ask a question?
Sorry, just a follow-up first. So my concern is, I mean, John is talking about, you know, what the primary use, that's, has been described to us, has been the students. Community, what I hear, when I hear community is great, like a couple of outing club things, but when I hear it start to become a revenue stream, and there's no control from the town, honestly, that's from a, I, that's when I started getting nervous, because that kind of means if there's nothing from the town, or no oversight, that it could truly turn into like significant revenue stream, and then significant community or neighborhood impact. So that's, I, I am concerned about that.
Excuse me, Maria.
Can I ask a question? Karen, do, is it correct, do I understand that the organizations or individuals that utilize that field that are not Colby Sawyer have to come and get permission from Colby Sawyer? And that's from the events manager, is that correct?
Yeah, so in the example of Black Rock, for example, they are a camp that comes to Colby Sawyer every year, this is, this, this coming summer will be our third year with them. They stay for four weeks, they use our fields, they pay for usage of the fields, and they stay in our residence halls, and they pay for the use of the residence halls, and they pay for use of the dining facility for food. And that all runs through our event person.
And what about, we're using the outing club as an example, sort of a lower level use?
Yeah, I think most of that has kind of gone through the Hogan Center and Lisa Lacome and Athletics, versus a true, like, special event, that, like, a concert, or the Black Rock Camp that's here, using multiple services on campus.
Right, so what happens with outing club? It goes through Hogan?
Probably through either Athletics or Hogan, yeah, Lisa Lacome. That's where a lot of our rentals come. We, we rent Hogan out all the time.
Okay, my, okay, I'm trying to absorb that, but what does your insurance company require?
They don't, we, we give certificates of insurance to people who want to rent our facilities for anything. They don't require that we inform them of a special event at all. That's, that's a lot, a permitted use under our insurance umbrella.
Thank you.
What is the number, I mean, we haven't really discussed what the number of special events is, I mean, maybe that's something that's also mitigating.
I'm thinking about a lot, I spoke to Laura about it, and that's what is the tough part, is that if we are, we're putting the outing club, or again, some of those community under the umbrella, you know, I, I came in at 50, but I don't, I'm, I don't think 50 is going to be a number that's used, like, I just, it's just such a hard number to, to nail down, if we consider the community piece of it, like, every time a community comes in and wants to use, you know, that for an hour or whatnot, so my initial was 50 per the year.
You're saying they come in for an hour for the lights?
Well, yeah, I'm just saying that, that could be, like, when I think about the outing club, to me, that's something that is, okay, they wanted to do a little youth thing in the evening, and again, they're, we're talking youth, so we're not going to be late at night, so maybe the field is free because our teams have off, and they want to go a six to seven, or a seven to eight, and do a youth, like, a little youth event, like, that's immediately kind of what I think about, still within the parameters, but it's hard, because it just, I, I don't know, because we do partner with these, you know, these, these community organizations, and I know it's important, so.
But we're, we're still talking about use of the lights.
Yeah.
And number of events.
Yeah, so I came in at, at 50 for the year, like, that, that was the original, but then a special event, I can tell you from like a, hosting something from an athletic, I, I, you know, Kearsarge maybe once or twice, you know, a year, I, I think that.
I guess 50 seems a little high to me, considering that six months of the year, I would think it's not usable, either snow, or it's light past when they need to be turned off. So then, when you then divide, you know, the, the actual weeks of usage by 50, that sounds like a lot of special events each week. I don't know how many, maybe it's easier to sort of break it down in, you know, in October, you know, how many special, non-Colby Sawyer, I mean, I assume you're going to be using this most days, that it's not even available.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
So, I don't know, 50 was a little higher than I expected.
No, and I agree, I just didn't know where to come in, and.
So just, middle of October, in a week, I mean, do you think that there's one night available that you could potentially be, obviously, you don't know exactly what the market to someone else is going to be, but what is the availability even, I think is?
Yeah.
Because I assume your teams practice every day that they're not playing, or that they have a game other than Sundays?
Right.
Okay.
Some teams. Yeah.
So there'll be, but, but I think the question here is on non-Colby Sawyer events, right? So we're talking, to Adam's point, how many days a week is the field even ostensibly available in, in the peak season when you would need the lighting?
Yeah, I mean, I, I would be fine cutting it in half, or saying 30, 25, 30, certainly. Again, I just came in because if we're counting all these things as these special events, then it's like, oh, I don't want to limit the outing club, but.
But, but we talked before, like, the outing club is limited now by the fact that there aren't lights, so it's, it would be an expanded use for the outing club versus like, coming in, in the spring, when the light is fine, it's not an issue, like, then that doesn't get triggered by any of this.
Yeah, no, definitely, I mean, I, I think 25 to 30 is certainly reasonable, I don't.
Okay, question on, like, from the example of the outing club, and I can reread this, but then I'm going to lose track of the conversation. Say, because this is what I could see, potentially, like, you guys had talked about, like, the baseball, I think it was outing club baseball, sometimes might use it. Do we, because we have the access road lighting under this, if they turned on the access road lighting, does that automatically put it into an event? Just to, to the point of like, I'm just trying to nail down where, with this number, what they, what would even count?
I mean, I don't think the access.
It would just be the turf field with the lights, right? Anything that would fall under the umbrella of, up until 9:00 PM, right, with the lights on? Because they can't use, I mean, we do do baseball things down there, but it's, it's limited to obviously daylight and, and time of year.
Right, but I know, like, the outing club, for instance, just put lights in their parking lot because the events are ending right, right around, which is why, like, I'm just, I'm just trying to get the idea, because, to the, to the point of like, yeah, I mean, how often is outing club going to be using the field with the lights on?
Yeah.
Versus?
Literally, I don't think much, I just don't want to shut the door on some of our community people, that's, it's really not to say, we're not saying all of a sudden we're throwing, it's just, I don't want to shut the door on some of these community people, it's.
But are they unable to turn on those access lights without it falling under this? Just curiosity-wise? I could just see it coming up eventually, like, as like, oh, and now we can't turn on the access, I.
I mean, by provision under three, two, third bullet point, I mean, I don't think the access lights and parking lights should be on unless the field lights have been on, because it's saying they have to be shut off 30 minutes later.
Yep.
So, you know, if an event that wasn't using the lights just runs up too close to when it's getting dark, and they need to flip the switch on the road lights to get people out of there, I mean, I think that's a reasonable thing to, to expect, but I don't think they want to just run the lights to invite people going down there after dark anyways, because they're already restricting access down there after dark.
Are we comfortable with 25 special events per year? Are you comfortable with 25?
To me, it sounds high, but I can't, I mean, when you're talking about such a small period of time, but, I don't know, 20, 25, I, I'd leave that to Adam to be a next one.
Okay.
And part of me wonders how much this is really going to be available for.
And that's the other, it's hard.
I don't know if you guys have anything like, check it out after two years.
Sorry, Cotton, thanks.
Check it out after two years, you know, I mean, have some kind of a review. I, I don't see why, you know, and, and have a discussion. I, I mean, I don't, I, I would, I'd go on the, personally, I'd go on the smaller side, and then say, why do you need more? And you'd have some documentation, back to the evidence, or the other way around. Nope, nobody wants to do it, I mean, I'm not saying that's going to happen, but.
I agree, I agree with, that's a great idea, but how do you put that in the ordinance? Or how, how do you do that?
We really, I don't think could put something in the ordinance.
You could do it on site plan when you go through that.
You could, although the site plan would not speak to the overall, that would be specific to what you have planned there. If the ordinance allows 20 or 25 special events, that's allowed, you know, you can't further constrain through conditions on a site plan. I think.
We could put in here that on site plan, the number of special events will be determined.
That would go through the site planner view regulations, though.
Can you guys speak up? I'm always worried about the vaping of the sound.
Sorry. I, I just said, is there a way that we could defer it to site plan? The number, to say, you know, special events, because we may be dealing with this in 10 years.
I'm wondering if it's easier to tie it instead of a, but then the usage is not going to be evenly throughout the year. I was going to say, events per month versus on an annual basis, but then, it may be that October has six, and then, you know, you don't have any for three months.
While we're thinking about that one, I just had a thought about the permit thing. I grew up in a time when nobody had lights, and the first place that got lights, there was a tremendous demand to be under the lights for young kids and stuff like that. You might see the permit process as something that gives you a little breathing room in terms of every friend of the, of the college comes and said, I'd like to get my son's team, or my grandson's team on there. Just a thought.
So, I mean, if we look at the months that are potential for usage, are going to likely be April, May, September, October, November, right? I mean, June through August should be pretty light, I mean, middle of June is the brightest it's going to be, and then by usually this point in November, where, you know, we could have snow, and so it, it won't be used presumably through March. So if we look at, really, it's five months out of the year that the lights will be in play there, you know, 20, 20 special events in those five months works out to about one a week. I mean, if you're already taking one day a week out, but it's not going to be turned on on Sunday, you're down to six days of usage, that leaves, if you were to go to the maximum of one per week, that leaves you five days per week, which seems like is probably what you'll need it for anyways, just to get practices in, in the late afternoon in those times. And is that a reasonable? I mean, do you see yourself more than once a week? I mean, I, I imagine your, your use is always going to come first for you, right? And so, so I, I mean, I'm, that brings you to 80% of, you know, the total usage dedicated to you, and then there's this sort of 10%, can't be used, and 10% flexibility.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, something like that sounds reasonable to me. I'm thinking about a special event, like, if you had, like, a big tournament or something like that, a big collegiate thing, like, that that would be a special event, and if that went on for multiple days, then you're burning through your days there, but that feels like a rare thing, versus like, the, I think what we're trying to make sure is that it, to Paul's point, and to what Cotton has said, like, that it doesn't become a thing where it's getting used all the time by outside groups, and I think the balance for you guys is to try to be a good community partner with saying, but we also have these rules that we have to abide by, so we're trying to, you know.
I mean, and, you know, even from this, just thinking about the other organizations that we would care to be community partners with, not that, there's probably a tiered sort of level of caring, right? And so I would think the outing club, the school, the town, are probably the partners that you're looking to support the most, and so, the school has lights, I mean, I think this, they're taken care of most of the time, there's going to be a sort of odd scenario where they might need it. If it's that, you know, they've got a championship game and their lights are out, I mean, we will obviously work with you. I mean, I think that we would figure out a way to make that work at the last minute. The outing club is prob, I mean, I don't see the town using the lights all that often, however, could the rec department, you know, want to have an event down there? I think that could have possibility. Is it once a year? Probably, you know, not too frequent. That leaves, I think, a good amount of usage potential for the outing club, or your rented-out non-events, you know, just that. So if we were to, you know, change the heading, temporary events, and then change wording to, short-term usage for non-athletic events may be granted for up to 20 special events through the submission of a town temporary event permit?
We'd have to decide that whole calendar versus academic.
Frankly, I live in a calendar year, and your academic calendar is not something I have any concept of.
Yeah, so I think, and that can change, so maybe it makes sense to just say per year, though, 20 per year, right, we're talking?
Up to 20 events per year, okay, yep.
Makes sense, so it's not separate. How does that sit with you guys? Cotton? Okay.
Okay. This is also probably a good time to remind you that this is not our last opportunity to make changes, you know, that the, the planning, I know, I know.
So hopeful it might be.
With any luck, but on the 12th, third, no, I'm sorry, the 10th, when we have our planning board meeting, when you will actually vote on this going forward to public hearing, we could change something that night, and then the first public hearing, hopefully we have nothing to change, and it's the first and only public hearing, however, if we want to change something that night, we have the opportunity to make a substantive change. change. Obviously, public hearings are advertised more widely through the newspaper and such. We could get public here that has some other input that may change what you think, at which time we would make those changes, schedule a second public hearing, and then that's it. We, the second public hearing is we are either comfortable with moving forward with this or we are not. If you are, it goes to town meeting and then the amendment is voted on. So it's not the last bite at the apple, although I think we're, we're almost to the core, so.
Yeah, okay, so I'm, I think we're, seems like we're kind of in agreement here on that language.
Yeah, I do want to go back to the enforcement section because I'll be honest, I really have no idea where we left off with that and where we're.
I think John said he sort of liked the concept. I think John said he sort of liked the concept. If I can find what I said. In the event of a violation, I guess goes, the planning board may touch, take such action. No, in the event of violation, in addition to the rights under section twenty-nine or thirty-nine, article thirty-nine, planning board may take such actions to limit the rights granted here under. I guess we, I guess we would say during the term of any violation.
Yeah, I don't think we'd want to say the planning board because they're not an enforcement mechanism.
Okay.
It's typically board of selectmen or zoning administrator.
Town.
Yep. To any event of violation in addition to authority provided.
Leaves the implication that you're going to work it out, short of an injunctive relief, which is going to happen anyway.
I was going to say, isn't that implied in the enforcement section of the town? That people are going to work it out? I would hope that that's implied for everybody in town.
I would say, I would say that's the case. I was trying to find language that-
I, I personally think it should be struck. It, it's not, we already have an enforcement section. We're going to comply with that. We're obviously going to try to work it out. And if these kinds of writings aren't put in every other ordinance, I don't see why we need to have it in there. That's just where I am on it.
In general, I do worry when we start to put multiple different enforcement things. We can get things that are competing with each other, but also if we make an amendment to something, you have to remember all the different spots you need to amend your enforcement protocols, which we got in trouble with the septic regs that were referenced throughout the ordinance in multiple spots, when they would get forgotten to be amended. So I am sensitive to that. Yeah, I guess, what's the thought of the board?
Adam, when you, earlier you were talking kind of, I think, generally about other projects. But just so I understand kind of the process, right? So say it was a construction project and something happens and they're no, no longer in compliance. So you, the process is you go, you discuss it with them, but there's, they don't stop construction immediately unless you-
Depends, depends on the egregiousness of it. So, um, some real world examples, um, we get a complaint that, uh, there's a house going up on a street in town and I immediately look in our file and I don't have a permit for that. They immediately get a, a letter if we can address it by email. The hard part is if you're sending a letter by mail, immediately could be two weeks.
Right.
You know, and, and we could certainly deliver something in person. Most of the contractors in town, we have contact information for. So we send something in email immediately, you've got to stop at least until we know what the heck is going on here.
Right.
Different example this week that's taken a, a substantial amount of time, a stone wall being built where there is concern that the stone wall is not being built, um, where it was, uh, approved as part of something that, that your board approved. The area that impacts what your board approved is not being built yet. They are, you know, still down the way. We did not tell them to stop. We reached out to the engineer on the project. We've reached out to the contractors on the project. Sam Clark and I spent the afternoon in the mud yesterday stretching tape measures from other things on the site plan to try to figure out if we think there's legitimacy to the concern. But that takes time and we're not going to tell someone to stop on a part that is really not impacted with the concerned part until we see some level of evidence that, that we think that there's reason to stop. So it is situational. In this scenario, if we, you know, the next morning I get here and there's a voicemail saying, hey, the college had loud music going until midnight, I'm immediately texting or calling Karen saying, what do you know? And, you know, we go from there. And my guess is it's, you know, within hours, it's probably handled and we don't have to go further. If Karen ignores me and then I get something the next morning saying, hey, it's again, then they're probably going to get a letter or, you know, something more substantial.
Right.
And, and truly-
Does that, like, from, from like a neighbor standpoint, that process seem, right? Like, that all seems reasonable?
I also saw the general rate.
Yeah.
And, you know, one thing with enforcement is it can oftentimes be dependent on the person in the position and that is hard. However, I would say that, you know, all of the guidance from the New Hampshire Municipal Association includes those sorts of initial conversations because frankly, getting someone to stop through a cease and desist, and then if they don't stop going through the court proceedings, you are immediately in a long drawn out process that doesn't really stop somebody from doing anything. So though that is the ultimate solution, um, you know, whoever is in the, the enforcement position should be going through that, that more sort of community-based approach to start.
So then, if that's the thought, are you thinking both one and two? You're striking the whole section or do you think?
I think so. I mean, I get the, um, and maybe it's that we just have a bullet that references the, you know, the, the terms of article twenty-nine or whatever it is enforcement provisions apply so that when this is on the ballot, people see that and that they, you know, they don't just see this in a vacuum that there's nothing. Um, you know, we don't do it in other sections, but I think if the ultimate goal is to get the community to buy in and be comfortable with this, maybe it makes sense to just have the, the article reference. We do have spots in there that, you know, wetlands ordinance and stuff that says refer to the streams ordinance and that sort of thing. So I don't think it's entirely out of the box, but it at least provides, in the context of this amendment that will be shown in the town report in just that abbreviated version.
It makes clear that there is an enforcement mechanism even if people don't read it.
Right.
So you're suggesting that we would, in, for enforcement and compliance, you would just put in some boilerplate around, please see X section, the, uh, whatever this is.
I think it's article twenty-nine.
I'm looking.
Provisions of article twenty-nine enforcement shall-
I'm looking around the board. How do folks feel about this approach? You're okay with? Janet, you're good?
Yeah.
Good? Okay. Emily, you're good with that?
So if it says provisions of article twenty-nine enforcement shall apply to all matters of enforcement, just leave it there.
Okay.
Uh, I think that would just be bullet under enforcement.
So it would be, the whole thing would be just that? That was part of the question we-
I just add for some general knowledge, the way athletics works, I've been at all levels, D1, D2, and D3, and I can tell you my phone doesn't go off. The amount of calls unfortunately I've had in the middle of night, a student, you know, really heavy hitting thing. So that's something like coming in, you know, in this leadership position, like, I mean, chances are I'll probably be up with one of my kids anyway, but like, if that were to happen and, and, you know, Karen, like, she could immediately call me anytime and that's something that, it's just the nature of it. Yeah.
Adam, do you want me to talk about the thing that we talked about this morning?
Sure.
Adam and I have been talking sporadically. He's been so busy and I've been busy the last couple of weeks. But when we step back and look at what, what we're doing here, this is an amendment to the regulations and will, will apply until it's changed. And we've obviously been focusing on the college's proposal to light the, the turf field, but things change. And ten years from now, the college is rolling in dough, it's worked well, and you come back and you say, we've got a new dark skies regulation, we can light the entire Kelsey field and have, you know, we've expanded our sports program, we'll have baseball, we'll have all these events every night. The way that it's written, the only, the only thing the board can look is at the noise and the, and the dark sky and cannot, you know, be a site plan approval, so you, you look at the regulation. We can't turn back and say, well, what is the cumulative effect on the community of, you know, that effect? And we kicked around whether we made the site plan a special exception and we talked about perhaps adding in here that, I, I don't have the wording, but that with respect to any site plan proposed, which hasn't been really proposed, um, the planning board will take into effect the effect on the community and the neighbors and the cumulative effect of, um, you know, subsequent developments. And I just wanted to kick that around for the board. My concern about it is that, I mean, what I described is what this does as it's drafted is actual and we may have comments from abutters or others in the town about that. And secondly, I think everything that the college has said is it wants to be a good neighbor and wants, uh, number one, this to pass, but secondly, uh, would not be comfortable coming back and doing that without thinking about the effect on the community and the abutters. So I think that's a summary of what we've been talking about.
So, um, I didn't know that, I, I thought that this plan, this, all the regulation stuff is only about this one field. Are you saying that it's open for, if they have the money, they can just go to the next field or, I mean, they can just add a field without coming back to you?
Okay, and I think it's been confusing because we've been talking about the turf field and everything.
Right.
And I was confused the first night.
Well, because I'll be very worried and not at all happy if this implies lighting on the other two fields just because the college now has more money to do that. I'll not be, that's not what I thought we were talking about, so, um, I don't-
I, I mean, there's nothing in here that would limit it to specifically the turf field at this point. I mean, I don't think, uh, it's not that it wouldn't be without further, it would be further site plan review. I mean, if the, I'm trying to think of, because it's a, this is done on a zone basis so far. I mean, if we were to add, does the turf field have a name other than Kelsey Field? Or?
Sally?
What is it?
Sally Beach Field.
So I think, um, you know, the way to do that would be, um, give me a second. So be field lighting and lighting on access roads and parking areas or, or, sorry, field lighting, this is under three, one, by the way, um, field lighting on Sally whatever, what did you say?
Beach.
So field lighting on Sally Beach Field and lighting on access roads and parking areas shall be allowed at Kelsey Field within the institutional recreational zone. I think that that may be an important clarifier if there's, um, you know, desire down the, the road to add to the other fields. I think it would take another amendment of this, obviously. Right, it would take, I don't know if that's where we get into special exception discussion of, you know, by right through this ordinance, you can put lights on Sally Beach Field and then, you know, subsequent installations could be allowed by special exception or you just leave it that, you know, they're, they're not? I don't know. I mean, that's a conversation we have to have, but, um, I don't know what thoughts are.
You know, I was, right now it says you can't have any lights and we're deleting that. And so the question is, on any site plan, do we look at the cumulative effect on the community and the abutters? Or do we say you still can't have any lights except with respect to Sally Beach Field?
I thought we talked about this, though, that you can't do spot zoning or some, there was some term you used, Adam. We talked about it at the last meeting, that this, we are zoned institutional, whatever, college and this would allow us in the future if we wanted to do that. I'm not saying we have a plan to do that right now. We don't have money to do that, but also don't want to get into the same situation we're in, in right now. You know, we have a property that we own, it has athletic fields on it, it's very reasonable for colleges to want lights. I could see in the future, potentially, particularly the baseball field. I don't, we do not have a plan to do that right now, but I don't want us spot zoning, and maybe that's not the term you used, Adam, but, um, we did talk about that at, I think, our first planning session, that this was for our zone, not for a field.
I'm really sorry, but I wasn't in that first conversation and I didn't know that. So that would give me, if you're giving, John, you knew that we were talking about possible, the whole field? No, you didn't.
I've heard several times that it was for that field only. I do not remember anybody saying that this was going to be the first field of several, but I do remember Karen saying to me once that what an administration says today is not binding on future administrations. I strongly disagree with that, but I'm here working in good faith to try to get past what has happened in the past. And that's the reason I am so adamant, given what she did say to me, that we have zoning that answers the representations not only for today, but for tomorrow and why I'm looking for strong language that makes it so that it's clear what they are asking to do. Several times during this process, we've heard, oh, well, not just lights for us, we want lights to be good citizens, too. That's in addition to what they first asked for. I'm looking, I'm trying to be as supportive of this as possible. We have a long history of supporting Colby Sawyer. That's not what this is about. It's about making rules that are applicable, not just today, but on the next administration that gets the decision, has an idea that, oh, well, we'd like to put lights here and there and everywhere. I, I just want it to be certain enough so that somebody reading this in ten years, five years, knows what they can and cannot do. And we don't get into some situation where we're debating about encroachment and violating the terms and the spirits of the rule that was written because we've been there already and I don't want to go there again.
And, and I think the conversation that Karen is recalling, and I don't remember who was here that day or not, but I do remember the conversation. I believe it was in the context of the buffer, which is when the question of the Candela's came up, that if there's an area on the field that we want or on the complex, more or less, that we would like to constrain it to, the way to do that is probably most easily done by setting a setback in a buffer. I do have some, I mean, I think limiting it to the Sally Beach Field, it would get us through for, for now, but I do have some concern of, okay, so what if, you know, you get a donation and then the latest field turf technology requires a whole redesign of that and you're not going to call it the Sally Beach Field anymore and, you know, and it's sort of, it's constraining it to something that could change. sort of, it's constraining it to something that could change.
Paul, you said earlier, just a little while ago, what, are we, are we allowing lights, is it a change of are we allowing lights or are we only allowing this? In other words, you still can't have lights except for yes, this is one exception? Did you, you had some phrasing on that? That I, that would work for me?
Well, I think, I think because of the naming thing, the way that it's done, and I think we had a conversation in the meeting where I mistakenly thought Kelsey Field was the field we were talking about, not the whole thing. And that's probably my fault that, of the misunderstanding, but my only point was the way that it's written, it changes the zone, at least for Kelsey Fields, which, yes, that's, I mean, that's the way that it's written now. Any application would have to go through site plan approval. And my point was, is that the intent? Exactly what I said was, you know, not sure that there won't be abutters or other people in the town that think that's an issue. And the, really, the question, I brought it up, is, I think, I certainly am supportive of the concept of lighting the field that we're talking about. I'm not ready to say the whole of Kelsey Field can be lit. So how do, how do we work that out with the abutters, with the town, with the college and get this, you know, this amendment done correctly? And I don't have the answer to that. I think that's what we're talking about and that's, the college has perhaps one view and you have a different view. That's why we have to, you know, work this out, I think.
As far as special exceptions goes, if, right now, what has been being proposed is by right that it could go to the planning board for site plan review if it's a special exception or some version of it requires special exception. If the, you know, if it's the first lighting on the turf is by right still, that it goes to the planning board for site plan review without the zoning board. If there's a second tier that requires, you know, special exception, what happens there is that it goes to the zoning board of adjustment and then they have a separate list of criteria in the back of the zoning ordinance under the board of adjustment that they have to go through to determine whether or not that special exception could be granted. And then there's a section that allows for some conditions and safeguards regarding, you know, larger setbacks and, you know, they can, they can require things over and above what the ordinance requires. I'm wondering, though, if some of those safeguards could be built in to the ordinance by way of setbacks that may help to sort of constrain the area in which the lights are, that the, it may not bind it to a particular field within the area that they are allowed, but it would bind them to an area so that the material change, whether it's on the turf field or the baseball field or both, may not create impacts to neighbors. I don't know if that's, I don't know.
So you're talking, you're talking significant setbacks, which would preclude maybe using the baseball field if the setbacks were substantial, that it wouldn't be possible to do it?
Depending on the degree of the buffer, right? Or maybe it would allow like some portion, but not all of the site or some, you know, some thing.
Right.
Right. Or if the setbacks are essentially set to what the open area currently is, although, you know, obviously hearing that we would, I'm sure that these neighbor concerns are not unique to the wider neighbor concerns. And so I think that we have to be, you know, aware of that, that proposing something that's sort of carte blanche on Kelsey Field could see substantial opposition and, you know, all of this work could be for naught. And we find ourselves back here next November trying to, to get through it. Trying to just sort of think of creative.
I think you have to name the field that we're talking about.
So Karen, I hear your point about not wanting to come back here, if it goes beyond the, the, what's it called again?
Sally.
Sally.
Beach.
Yeah. But Adam raises the point as well about, and obviously Cotton has mentioned too, the concern that we might get from neighbors if it was a broader thing, realizing that it is by zone, but we'll have to figure out a way to do that.
You know, the concern is, if you were to light this whole area, even though you might not be using it very often, it would be a beacon right in the middle of town. And I'm not sure that not only Birch Acres, Job Seaman's Acres, Seaman's Road might think, wow, is that, is that really what we want to see happen to the community? So I think it would be better just to focus on the Sally Beach Field and deal with any further aspirations later.
I think that's part of the problem and why we're here today, though. I mean, I'll give you an example. When we were putting up the athletic pavilion, this ordinance was so restrictive, we couldn't even get safety lighting in. So I hear we're trying to, you know, I'm not trying to push in another field, but I am not going to be here in 10 years or 20 years or 30 years and I can't predict. And I, in my mind, I don't see how this is different if you've got a residential zone, but I say, but, okay, Adam, your house, we're not going to let you have a sidewalk by your house, but everyone else in the neighborhood is going to have one. How is that different? You've got us as a zone, we're in a zone and we're going from a place where the entire zone got restricted, where we couldn't put any lights in. So I don't understand how we can just parcel that out, really.
I think it is somewhat specific on a lot by lot basis, though, and it's unique in that your zone is your lot. I mean, that's, really, it's spot zoning, which is not, I mean, it's, we're probably on the cusp of legality as it is, but I do think when we're looking at it more from a lot basis, we do have the ability to constrain where on that lot, whether it's, you know, every house in that zone can't be within 50 feet of the side yard setback or whatever the limitation may be.
I am very supportive of this proposal for the turf field, which also is the understanding of where you want to go right now. I also understand that could change in the future. What I also believe is that we don't know the impact yet, when these lights are erected, what it's going to look like, whether there will be spread. I don't think we have enough information to make a broader decision about lighting, the potential of lighting the whole area. Were these lights in place and were we able to evaluate their impact, then we would have more information. I don't think we have enough information to do that at this point.
I'm wondering if there's a way to limit it to, instead of saying specifically the Sally Beach Field, because I do worry about baking something into the ordinance that is specific to, to the name of a particular field that you may modify in five years. It may just still be that that one field has lighting.
Adam?
But.
Adam, just.
Perhaps you could limit it to one field. The zone allows for one light, one set of lights.
And I would, that was on my mind, John. My concern there then is the parameters of where the field are now are comfortable. If that one field is redesigned to be right near, you know, at boundary of the overall Kelsey Field, that may have a different impact than where the actual Sally Beach Field is. Which brings me back to the, do we choose, you know, buffer boundaries and say, this is the game plan that you can play within? You know, the hardest part here, just one second, Paul, sorry, is that, you know, picking a buffer boundary, nothing is square on this. And so if you're looking at how the baseball field is oriented, I mean, if we pick 1,500 feet or 2,000 feet or whatever off the rear property line, that's not, I mean, we need a skewed buffer, which gets pretty complicated.
This came to me, it may not solve the problem, but I'll just throw it out there. If we, if we said it's limited to one field, not in excess of whatever the square footage plus 10%, 20% is, and did something with buffers that indicated that that was more toward the center like the turf field is, is that too simplistic?
I think it's almost.
Yeah, I think if you say it's one field not to exceed, you know, whatever the field is plus 10%, 20%, you know, in the case you redesign it, move it someplace. And then have a buffer so that it doesn't.
I mean, maybe it's just on the turf field, you know, if you only have on, on one turf field or.
If you change the other field of turf, then that changes that, but.
And, and I, I mean, I do want to comment on, I hear your point, Karen, of, you know, limiting, however, I think in a lot of ways, that is the, the sort of progression of zoning. I mean, this conversation wouldn't have happened 20, 25 years ago when this zone was written because lighting technology wasn't where it is. So it may be that in another 15 years, that lighting technology is to a point and operations are to a point where it is comfortable to have this conversation for lighting the other fields. We don't know, right? I mean, I don't, I don't think any of us would have thought that the lighting technology now was where we would be. And so there will be advancements that maybe change how this zone is used and how, what can be approved. And really, that's why this opportunity comes around once a year for amendments. You know, and I think in some ways, baseball specifically on the field happens at a time of year when light is typically in the favor of the, the sport. You know, I'm sure there are some practices in the early season that, you know, but that seems like a less likely installation. That being said, I know you can't control what your donors are into and what they want to make work, but from a, an operations standpoint of the college, that doesn't, I mean, as an outsider, that doesn't seem like the, the one constraint that's probably causing the most problems right now.
Do you think we can wrap this up today or we need to try to find time?
I don't, we have a police meeting on the sixth, so I don't think we.
Or sometime that week.
Yeah, I do want to be cognizant of people's schedules.
Yeah. Just give us a sec, we're just going to calendars for a sec.
Mary Ann had a question. She wanted to know with regard to a permit, if someone asks for one from the college and obviously you have insurance or they're supposed to be covered with insurance. She wondered, is there any chance the town might be responsible if something adverse I would think your insurance would cover every possibility.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
You know, the possibility of scheduling another session seems somewhat, looking at my schedule that week, seems somewhat ridiculous. Naming Sally Beach Field may be an imperfect solution, but it may be the solution that we have. You know, and if we could say Sally Beach Field or currently named Sally Beach Field, field lighting on field currently referred to as Sally.
The single field currently defined as or whatever.
Right.
Or it's, or it's, whatever would be the successor name or something like that.
So if we save.
Do we want a date on that as it exists?
This will, on the top, it'll say amended, March, whatever town meeting date is. So if we say, under three one, field lighting on field currently named Sally Beach Field and lighting on access roads and parking areas shall be allowed at Kelsey Field, meaning the complex. Should we add Kelsey Field Complex so that that's more clear, so that we don't run into the scenario of, you know, the, the interpretation that Kelsey Field is a specific field? Or do we just say whoever's in charge of, you know, reading that will know that?
I don't think it hurts to say at the Kelsey Field Complex, lowercase, you know, just, just to be clear.
Complex within the institutional recreational zone.
Okay. Does that. Are you guys, that obviously would speak to your concerns for John and Cotton, but I mean, I hear your concerns, Karen, but, you know, it may be.
You're tying hands with the college.
Yeah.
That's what you're doing.
Yes.
I'm here now. You know, it's great that we can get the lights on this field now, but.
But you are constraining the college and you're doing it in a way that I'm not sure we would do in other zones of the town. That, that's my biggest concern. We wouldn't, we wouldn't look at certain areas in a zone.
It also may be, I hear your point for sure, but there also may be a situation where if this goes as well as I'm hoping it would and that, that is, as you intended to go, that it may be a situation where people are then not fazed by that idea, because they might say, oh, they did a great job with the Sally Beach Field and therefore adding another field later, but amending the zoning to do that would not be a heavy lift. I do share Adam's concern that if we don't limit it some way, that people might be, even people who are friendly to the proposal might be then not so much, you know?
I see.
So, yeah.
So can I just quickly, I know people have got to get to work, but can I just summarize the different?
Please do, yeah.
Okay, so we have that change there, which I won't state again. And then under three three, we have changing special events to temporary events so that it aligns with the temporary event section, which now will read, short-term usage for non-athletic events may be granted for up to 20 special events per year through the submission of a town temporary event permit. And the discussion was the per year would be the calendar year, not the academic year.
That's great.
And then.
I would not use special events there, I would use non-athletic events. Just from what you just said, for up to 20 special events there.
For up to 20 non-athletic events?
I just.
Okay.
Yep.
Yep.
Can you read that through again?
Sure.
I think it's redundant, but maybe I'm combining what you have and what I have.
Okay. Temporary events, short-term usage for non-athletic events may be granted for up to 20 non-athletic events per year through the submission of a town temporary event permit.
I would just say events, I think it's redundant, but, whatever.
For events?
Yeah.
Per year, 20 events per year?
Yeah, and just make it lowercase. You already said that they're non-athletic events.
Sure.
That way it's not.
Good with that?
That's fine, yeah. That's a good edit. Thank you.
Okay. All right. And then, under the enforcement section, the conversation was to include the, the reference to our enforcement section, leave it at that, to read, provisions of Article 29 enforcement shall apply to all matters of enforcement. Okay. I didn't have any other changes other than the renumbering thing, once this is polished up for what's it goes into.
The definition should, for non-athletic events, I have it as any event not classified as capital athletic event.
Yep, that is in here, thank you.
I'm not sure that this is a change. I didn't understand it, yard requirements, which is.
It's just the numbering.
No, no, but at the end, it says whichever is greater. It doesn't seem to track English-wise.
Yeah, that's something that's just in there now. Is it not? I don't, that's, I would say it's been in our ordinance since this was put in place. I don't know. Typically, it says, or the underlying zone, whichever's greater. Just looking at the other sections in the institutional, either say to conform to the underlying zone or to the 25 feet. So maybe we just eliminate as a housekeeping, whichever's greater.
I don't know what it means. Huh?
That's a good edit. Thanks, Paul.
All right. Is that it?
Yeah, I think we touched on all those.
Just eliminated the whichever is greater because we were only saying 25 anyways, so there was.
Yeah.
It was already absolute. I'm guessing in the drafting in 2004, whenever it was, initially, there was something else in there that they had and, this is why we need a service like John's of renumbering, because the numbering, the, there's no standardized numbering to this ordinance from all of the different people who have worked on drafting in the 60 years and it's infuriating at times. Yeah, that's true. All right. So we will take this up again on December 10th, 6:30. I think we have one public hearing that night, so it shouldn't be too bad. It's a public hearing for an annexation for.
Dan Lloyd.
Yep, for selling a significant portion of a more or less vacant lot with a barn to the neighbor, so it shouldn't be anything too, too wild.
Okay, the 10th, yeah. So we just need a motion to adjourn?
Yep.
A second, can we get a second? Second, Paul, all in favor? Hi, thanks, everybody. Thank you all.